Welcome, everyone. It's January 8, 2024. If you would, please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our invocation tonight is by myself, and I won't ask for divine intervention that the city administrators, Michigan Wolverines beat the University of Washington Huskies tonight, the national championship. But since that game starts, I think about two minutes ago, if you want to pray silently that our meeting goes quickly, that's perfectly in order. So, anyway, if you would. Lord, I do ask that you watch over our city tonight. Thank you for this moisture and the beauty of fresh snow on the Bertus. Since tomorrow is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, I ask that you watch over the brave men and women who work tireless to keep Billings safe. I pray that they and their families will know that they are truly appreciated by their community and that you'll help us demonstrate that appreciation in tangible and meaningful ways. Thank you for the blessings of this past year. We ask that you continue to hold our community in your hands in the year ahead and that you help this city council conduct the business of the public with love, joy, peace, forbearance, kindness, goodness, faithfulness, gentleness, and self-control. Amen. Tony, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Shaw?
Here.
Gulick?
Here.
Neese?
Here.
Owen?
Here.
Joy?
Present.
Kennedy?
Here.
Aspen Leider?
Here.
Tidswell?
Here.
Boyet?
Here.
Rupsis?
Here.
And Mayor Cole?
Here. Welcome, everybody. Councilmember Shaw, as you can see, is with us online, consistent with our rules that we adopted last year. And Councilmember Shaw, if we fail to see your hand up or I fail, other councilmembers, please let me know. Kevin will be watching for you, but if we still don't recognize you, you need to feel free to just unmute yourself and go ahead and get our attention verbally, okay?
Got it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Then, before we jump into approval of our minutes, you'll see we have two new members of our city council. Welcome, councilmembers Kennedy and Aspen Leider. You were both sworn in this morning, I understand, and your certifications have been filed. So, you're the real deal. So, no backing out. Welcome to your first meeting. And Councilmember Shaw also will need to be sworn in, and Gina can add to this anything she would like, but we checked to see what the statute provides. Although we talked about the possibility of having her sworn in online, Gina was quite confident that by statute, a councilmember continues in their position until their successor has qualified and has been sworn in. So, in this case, we still have the old Councilmember Shaw, but at some point, we'll get the new Councilmember Shaw up. When she gets back, she's overseas, but will be back, I believe, tomorrow or the next day. She'll be sworn in by our clerk and will be at our next meeting. Gina, have I described that correctly?
Yes, Mayor, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. So, for tonight, that means that the old Councilmember Shaw is still with us, perfectly entitled to vote on that issue. Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, Gina, on this, because the state statute says that a term is for four years only, and so the term when she was elected started, you know, four years ago. So, it doesn't, I don't read the statute as saying that it's extended until the next successor. It may be for committee members or something like that, but the statute is pretty clear that it runs for four years. And I believe the legislators fixed that several years ago to make sure that that did run for a maximum length of four years.
Yes, Councilmember Neese, the language of the statute actually says the term of the office is four years and until the qualification of a successor. And there is some case law also indicating that what the general rule is, which is an officer shall hold over until his successor is appointed and qualified unless, by the language of the statute, such holding over is expressly or by clear implication prohibited. And the statute does not prohibit that. In fact, the use of the words "and" until seem to indicate that that general rule is applicable here.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Very good. Thank you very much. Then, we'll proceed. Our first order of business are minutes for December 11. Counselor, are there comments or motions? Councilmember Joy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I move we approve minutes December 11, 2023.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyet indicates a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. Motion is for approval of the minutes of December 11, 2023. If in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. We also have the minutes from December 18, 2023. Councilmember Gulick?
I move that we approve the draft minutes of December 18, 2023 as a record of that meeting.
Okay. Is there a second? Councilmember Boyet? Any discussion? Any discussion on the minutes of December 18? Motion is for approval, the minutes of December 18. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. That concludes minutes. We'll move on to council courtesies, and I'll kick us off here a little bit, counsel. You got an email from me over the weekend just asking for your preferences on council committee assignments. I've gotten a number of responses back on that. Thank you very much. Please keep those coming in. Also, tomorrow is the National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, and that's an important day to show gratitude for the brave men and women who support our community in law enforcement. And I encourage everybody to show their appreciation as they best can for law enforcement, however you think is most appropriate. It might be if you know somebody, just say thank you. Shoot them an email or get on the Billings Police Department Facebook, send them a nice note, whatever you think is appropriate. And then, also, I would like to sadly express my personal sorrow over the death of Gavin McCombs. He was the 15-year-old West High student who died in a car crash on Friday night on King Avenue West. I'm sure that the entire community extends to Gavin's family and friends our sincere sympathy. It also sadly reminds me that that would be, I believe, the seventh fatality from car crashes in about the last month. Speed was a factor in most of those. So, Chris, I just wonder if I could ask you, I recall about seven, eight years ago, we did look into the issue of traffic enforcement cameras at major intersections, and the legislature said no and closed that door. But I just wonder if, without doing any research, if it'd be possible, the city was looking at that very seriously, maybe had a staff report or some documentation about that. Again, I don't want you to do anything other than just maybe send me a copy of whatever had been done six, seven, eight years ago as a reminder, and we can think about that issue, or at least I'd like to think about that issue. And I guess I'd say just copy the council, and they can read it if they want to, but I don't know if that's possible, if that's not too much of a burden on you.
It is, Mayor. I had a chance to talk with the chief today, just exactly as you described, this city, prior to many of our times sitting here in our seats today, was down that path of using technology as an enforcement tool before it was taken away legislatively. The chief said he can dust off that information, and we can push it out. Just recognize it's dated, but some of it is probably relevant to at least some background information as we get into the next legislative session and/or our discussions about strategies and priorities about improving safety in the community. So, happy to just share that with all of you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Other, Councilmember Joy, I believe you had Paul, so Councilmember Joy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Paul Reader passed away on December 28 at his home. Mr. Reader was 93 years old. Paul served for 40 years as a Billings Police Chaplain. Police chaplain's responsibilities are to support officers, police personnel, and the public. His extraordinary service as a chaplain was acknowledged with a special recognition award by the International Conference of Police Chaplains in 2012. Mr. Reader's service was much appreciated. Paul Reader was the executive director of the Friendship House for 17 years. He was affiliated with the First Baptist Church of Billings. Paul served as the chair for many years with the Black Heritage Foundation of Billings in Yellowstone County. Paul Reader had a huge impact on our community through his civic and religious work.
Thank you, Councilmember Joy, and thank you to Paul for his decades of service to our community. Other council courtesies this evening? Okay. Don't see further, so we do have a proclamation this evening in recognition of Human Trafficking Prevention Month. I'll read that, and then we have former councilmember Ronnie, I think, who would like to comment on the proclamation. So, "Whereas, human trafficking is a public health issue and crime that exploits the most vulnerable among us and weakens the health and well-being of individuals, families, and communities across generations. And whereas more than 20 years since the passing of the Trafficking Human Protection Act, human trafficking still exists, including the forced or fraudulent recruitment, harboring, and transportation of people for labor or commercial sex. And whereas an estimated 50 million people are subjected to human trafficking globally, including cases of human trafficking reported in every U.S. state and territory. And whereas human trafficking can happen to anyone, but certain populations are disproportionately at risk, including people affected by abuse, violence, poverty, unstable living situations, social disconnection, and discrimination. And whereas people can be trafficked in person and online, in industries such as restaurants, domestic work, construction, agriculture, and factories, and by strangers or someone they know, including employers, partners, and family members. And whereas human trafficking can be prevented by building individual, community, and societal understanding and resilience, reducing social inequities, and addressing the conditions that contribute to exploitation. And whereas a successful response to human trafficking requires a coordinated, community-wide effort. And whereas every individual, family, community, and organization can contribute to enhancing human trafficking awareness, prevention, response by learning about ways to help at yhttf.org, the Yellowstone Human Trafficking Task Force website. Now, therefore, I, William Cole, Mayor of Billings, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2024 as Human Trafficking Prevention Month, and reaffirm our commitment to increase awareness and education on human trafficking, and to build diverse public-private partnerships to support a more comprehensive response to prevent and respond to human trafficking." So, with that, I'll invite former councilmember Penny Ronnie, and if she has any other guests, also to the podium. Welcome back, former councilmember Ronnie.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor Cole, council, and city staff. Human trafficking is modern-day sex and labor slavery. Before the creation of the Yellowstone Human Trafficking Task Force in 2016, Montana had one federal conviction on human trafficking. This isn't because the crime didn't exist. It did, and it has for generations. It's because of the way we were and were not addressing the crime. With the creation of the task force, we began to communicate and organize differently among government agencies and nonprofit organizations. We brought appropriate parties together to develop relationships and a shared language. We examined and changed the way we were talking about and investigating these crimes. And we began improving our laws to better protect victims and prosecute offenders, both traffickers and buyers. Since 2017, Montana now has more than 13 federal convictions on human trafficking and related crimes, and within the past year and a half alone, we have taken more than 70 online predators off the streets. 50 of those come from Billings. The Yellowstone Human Trafficking Task Force is now approximately 1,000 members strong, representing more than 100 agencies, organizations, and businesses. We have trained more than 20,000 people on how to identify, report, and combat human trafficking, and handed out more than 70,000 signs of trafficking cards, which lead to an average of two tips a week called into the FBI. Today, our task force went live with the most comprehensive website in Montana on human trafficking. We invite you and the public to visit our website at yhttf.org. Again, that is y-h-t-t-f.org. For Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we will be holding a two-hour training session open to the public on Wednesday, January 24, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the Billings Public Library. Thank you, Mayor and Ann Cole, for your support, and city council, and the extraordinary city of Billings staff for partnering with our community and state to combat the crime of human trafficking.
Thank you, Penny, and thank you for everybody who's worked on the task force and law enforcement for focusing on this very important issue. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll move then to council reports. Are there any council reports from organizations that councilmembers serve on on behalf of the city? Councilmember Neese?
Thank you, Mayor. As we know, the council committees are going to be, legislative and local affairs will be in merged, and we've got, I sent an email out earlier today regarding a meeting unofficial as per the mayor's comments because of the fact we haven't actually appointed anyone to the committee. So, we're welcoming any of the councilmembers to come to this meeting. It should have been, should be publicly noticed that there may be councilmembers, but we're not going to take any action. It's an unofficial meeting. Anything that revisited will be visited again by the committee once it's formalized. But it's just something to get some information. Councilwoman Joy has a guest coming to talk about the local labor possibilities of having that in our contracts and how that would work within cities. So, we're going to get some information there and then talk a little bit more about later than, and then that. We'll bring it back to the council if anything were to come of that. And then, also, just talk about the, you know, because it's a merger, we'll start getting ideas from the committee members now how to change the language within our rules of organization, and then once the actual members become there, it'll just kind of help move that work along so we can get focused back onto our task of legislative and local affairs.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Wednesday, 4 o'clock in the council meeting, council room.
Very good. Thank you. Any other council reports? Seeing none, city administrator report, Chris?
Mayor and Council, this will be brief, but we are asking that one item be removed from the agenda. That's consent agenda 1i. Just a whereas in that easement release resolution that we want to remove, and so, just to keep it clean, there's not a time limit on it, so we just ask that you remove it from the agenda. We'll put it back on the next agenda cleaned up. Second, just a reminder that, again, we're not here one week from today because of the holiday. We will be, though, Tuesday evening at the library, same time, different location, and the focus will be on crime prevention. We have been both before the holidays and since the holidays, today, in fact, meeting with some of our partners, most notably Riverstone Health, who's got a substantial role in the health and safety of our community as we prepare for that meeting. Some of you and others have talked about, you know, who to invite, think it's just so important. It is a public meeting, and so, all are welcome to attend, and particularly for organizations that you would like there. Please don't think somebody needs an invitation from me or staff or the mayor, that all of us, that's how we did the early December meeting, and we invite this one that way, too, just so we don't miss anybody. So, just a reminder again, Tuesday evening, not Monday, Tuesday, at the library, 5:30. And then, last, we have no ex parte communication to share that came in late this afternoon. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chris. Counsel, when we get to the, after we've had public comment, we get to the consent agenda, I'll ask if there's a motion to remove that item requested by staff, item 1, Roman numeral i. But before we get there, I guess we're at public comment on non-public hearing items. So, tonight, there is a public hearing on items 2, 3, and 4, and so, you can wait if you're interested to comment on items 2, 3, or 4. But there won't be a public hearing on items 1, which is anything under the consent agenda, or number 5. So, if you'd like to comment on items 1 or 5, please come to the podium now. We just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and tell us your name and address. Any comments on items 1 or 5?
Mayor, I do have two people that have raised their hand online.
Okay. Kevin, if you can introduce them or identify them?
All right. Nathan Sockman, go ahead and with your public comment.
Nathan, if you can, Nathan, if you can hear us, we, it's your turn, so go ahead. Just ask that you keep your comments to three minutes?
He's not connected.
Can't hear the audio?
He's still connecting.
Yeah, and Nathaniel, the screen says connecting to audio, so we'll give that a minute. I'm not sure if you're doing the connecting or we're doing the connecting.
Mayor, I did allow him to speak, so it must be a connection issue.
Okay. Did you say we have somebody else? We can come back to Nathaniel if that gets straightened out.
Yes. Chris Goransey? Go ahead with your public comment.
Good evening, council. I have been a proud resident here for about 14 years. I have a short speech prepared, which may sound shocking at first, but I promise I will get to my point. You will never be a real woman. You have no womb. You have no ovaries. You have no eggs. You are a homosexual man twisted by drugs and surgery into a crude mockery of nature's perfection.
Yeah. Hey, Chris, I'm just going to interrupt you to ask, this is time for public comment on items 1 or 5. So, item 1 is our consent agenda, and item number 5 is the nomination of our deputy mayor pro temp. Your comments have to do with something on items 1 or 5. If not, you'll have to wait until the end of the meeting if it's not on our agenda, and there is an opportunity for public comment on things not on our agenda at the end after item 5.
He did drop off.
He dropped off. Okay. So, thank you very much. And did the other gentleman also drop off?
He did not. I will allow to talk, and if we're going down the same road, then I will remove that permission.
Okay. So, Nathaniel, if you're there, hopefully you heard my comments about sticking your comments to items 1 and 5, but go ahead if you have a comment about item 1 or 5.
He's not connected, he can't hear us.
Yeah, still, we're getting the same connection. So, we apologize for the connection problem there. Nathaniel, if you would like to make a comment, please feel free to send an email to the whole city council or any individual city council members. You can get that address on the city website. With that, we'll move back to the, here, is there anybody else present with us who has comments on items 1 or 5? I don't see anybody, so we'll close the public comment period on items 1 and 5, move on to our consent agenda. Councilmember Boyet?
Thank you, Mayor. According to what the city administrator just said, I'd like to remove item 1i from the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Neese? Okay. Any discussion before we proceed to a vote? Okay. The motion is to remove item 1i from the agenda. We need a majority to approve that. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, so that is gone. I'll now ask for separations. I'm going to start off the separations by asking that we remove, for separate vote, item 1D, the contract with Dick Anderson Construction for the West End Water Treatment Plant. Are there other separations? Councilmember Aspen Leider?
1F, please.
Any other separations? Okay. We'll move ahead. Is there a motion or comment relating to the non-separated items? Councilmember Gulick?
I move to approve the items on the amended consent agenda, submitted with the exception of items D and F.
Very good. Is there a second? Councilmember Boyet? Any discussion? Councilmember Aspen Leider?
And correct me if I get out of order here, but I need to recuse myself from voting on item 1J.
Very good. We will also separate all of item 1J, 1, 2, and 3, there's three subparts. Okay. So, we'll also have that item removed from the motion, and we'll come back to that for a separate vote. And I assume that's fine with you, Councilmember Gulick, and yeah, Councilmember Boyet. So, all right. Very good. Any other discussion? Okay. So, we'll, Councilmember Gulick?
Just wanted to make a point. I'm pleased that the city is pursuing the Bureau of Reclamation Water Smart Grant. Be great to have the water savings if we are able to get the grant, as well as, I'm sure that helps with labor maintenance and whatnot to have that. So, thanks for pursuing that. Appreciate it.
Very good. Any other discussion? Okay. We'll proceed to a vote. Again, this is on the items that have not been separated. The motion is for approval of those items. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. First item separated was item 1D, the contract with Dick Anderson Construction. I'm going to ask Public Works Director Debbie just to come to the podium. I just separated this item kind of as a matter of principle, not because I oppose it, in fact, quite the opposite, I heartily support it, but this is a contract for $68 million. And it just, I was afraid it would send the wrong message to not recognize that we are approving a contract for $68 million to move ahead with our West End Water Treatment Plant. And Debbie, I know you've worked hard to get the price down on this, but do you want to comment further before we just move to a separate vote on this item?
No, I'm just thrilled this is on the council agenda tonight. This has been a long time coming, and to be able to move forward on the water plant and the support of the council and our citizens, it's huge. So, thank you.
Okay. And after those questions for Debbie, just so this is clear about, there's a motion, I'd like to make the motion for approval of this item. We'll still have an opportunity for discussion questions. There's a second, Councilmember Gulick? Okay. So, I saw Councilmember Owen, Councilmember Gulick, Councilmember Owen?
Thank you, Mayor. Debbie, how many total bids were received here? Do I understand from the memo just two?
So, this is a construction manager, it's a CMGC contract. So, we did proposals for this back several months ago before we did the first contract, and yes, on this time, we got two. This was the second time, you might recall, that we went out for this project. So, the first time, we had, I think, seven or eight, and then couldn't come to an arrangement with the lowest or the one we selected. So, the second time we went around, we just had the two.
Sure. Okay. So, then the follow-up here is obviously Dick Anderson is doing the work on New City Hall as well. So, help us understand, help the public understand kind of what precautions or measures are in place to ensure that both projects move forward and that, I mean, Dick Anderson's obviously a large company, but just talk us through how we're making sure that we're not getting one project stuck behind another or, you know, giving preference to anybody. Just talk it through.
Well, we should always have preference from me over Kevin, but
Which we do.
Thank you. No, absolutely. That's something that we always look at whenever we make a selection. One of the questions that we have, and this is a proposal-based selection, so one of the questions we have is what is your capacity to do this work? I mean, who, do you have the subs? Do you have the bonding capacity? Do you have the time, all that kind of thing? So, that was part of the conversation, that was part of the selection that we had with Dick Anderson when we did this project, when we did the selection. So, we're confident, they're confident, that we're able to move forward with this project. They are a large staff. City Hall is a different type of project, too, than this one is, so it's a different group of Dick Anderson that's doing the project. So, we're confident in it, and that is basically how we do that. There's also contract language, there's dates and milestones in that, which we'll hold those accountable, them accountable for that.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Gulick, you had something further, and then Councilmember Neese?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, this is great. Congratulations, we have that. I know it's been not an easy, smooth process to getting there and had to work over things. Are we, this is, there'll be other pieces in the future to this project, is that right? We anticipate, and I guess, there was mention of that there'll be an estimate, there'll be a budget be a budget amendment that's required because we're going to be exceeding what we thought was going to be required in this budget. Do you have a rough order of magnitude for that budget amendment? And I guess, further, what would be, I mean, I have to deal with this kind of thing all the time, too. So I, I just want to make sure that the public understands, you know, we have a process for how we try to keep things on budget, and when we can't, what we're doing to try to protect the taxpayer's resources, I guess.
Sure. That's a big question on this project. So first, I'll answer what's still coming. So we still have almost half of this project that still needs to be awarded. So we're working on the reservoir piece. We should have a design on that and a cost estimate, a guaranteed maximum price, we're hoping, early this summer, late spring, early this summer, probably planned on summer. And so that'll be right around 50 to 60 million dollars. So we'll have that project coming forward. Then we have the diversion structure, some pipe work, and all those projects will come forward, and then Hesper Road also. So we have another four or five projects that will still come forward with this project. We started with a budget years ago. We haven't changed that budget, which with all the inflation we've seen in this industry, we've tried to keep that budget. We've tried to keep the rates where we told everybody those rates would be. As soon as we figure out what this next piece looks like, we'll be back to say whether we're able to stay with that or not. Our goal is to stay with that number that we have talked about all along. And so we're continuing to do that and find ways to build it more cost-effectively or to possibly reduce scope in some places where we have to. So that's what we're doing to keep on budget.
Very good. Thank you, councilmember Neese.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Gullik asked so much of my questions, but what is the actual budget standing at now that we've approved so far?
So the overall budget's about $150 million, including design, all the construction and everything.
Okay. And then within these contracts that have been bid and approved, a couple of things is, I guess, we weren't able to work it out the first time, and you said you had, I think you said you had seven people participated. So help me understand why we don't go back at the first one, who is the most reasonable, couldn't work it out. Why didn't we go back to the next one in line and work it that way? Why don't we work that way? Why do we have to rebid it and only get two when we had, you know, six potentials that we could have gone with?
So if we had done this election and at that time not been able to come up with a scope and a fee that was amenable to both of us, we would have went to the second lowest bidder. In this case, what we did is we awarded the first part of the contract to the contractor that we picked. We worked with them for almost a year. And so we did the pre-design, the pre-construction. We did everything with them through that project. Then we ended up not being able to come to a guaranteed maximum price and move on to the next phase. So we actually did enter a contract with the lowest bid, with the one we selected, but then after a year passed, we couldn't go back to that original selection. We had to go do another one.
Great. Thank you for that. Mayor, one last question?
Sure.
Within all these contracts and bids, is there anything in here that's kind of encouraging or, because I know we don't have a contract for local labor, but encouraging local labor use?
I would have to look to make sure. A lot of our contracts, we say that a certain percent has to be done by the primary contractor, the general contractor, and I don't know if we said that in here. Obviously, Dick Anderson is a local contractor, so there is some in there. But I don't believe there's anything about local labor per se. I'll have to get back to you for sure on that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other discussion on the motion? Motion is for approval of item one D. You actually, the motion is made, seconded, so we'll move ahead with the vote. So if in favor of the motion for approval, item one D, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next separated item is item one F, Montana Fish Wildlife Parks Rec Trail and Stewardship Grant Application. Councilmember Aspman-Leader, that was your separation. Do you want to start us off?
Sure. Maybe this, questions for Director Pig, if he's the right guy.
Actually, let me, councilmember Asp, yeah, let me start off and then chime in maybe, because I'm not sure.
Perfect. So Mr. Mayor, Mr. Friday, in reading the memo, what I noticed was, you know, we still have a $600,000 gap in funding for that project, even with the Trailnet contribution and this $100,000 grant that we're applying for. What is the plan for that remaining $600,000 unfunded portion of the project? Where is that coming from, now that it's not coming from the Parks and Rec Bond?
Councilmember Aspman-Leader and Mayor and Council, so the, when the council approved the currently adopted CIP just in December, that 605,000 was included in the CIP out of general fund for that additional match. So currently, that's where it stands in the adopted CIP.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So, and my apologies for coming in as the new guy. If we're not successful in this grant, then is the plan to pull the remaining 110,000 out of the general fund as well to fill that gap if we're not successful with the grant?
So councilmember Aspman-Leader, Mayor and Council, correct. So the total of the, with the, if you take the 600,000, the 100 from Trailnet, and the other 100, yeah, the 705, so you would be, if we don't get this 100,000, then yeah, that would have to also come out of the general fund. And you would just have the Trailnet contribution match that would be still included.
And last, last follow-up, I mean, and again, this not being a part of that conversation in the CIP, do we have $100,000 floating around in the general fund budget?
So Wyatt, if you want to comment on that, and what I heard the question to be is, by approving, whatever we're approving tonight, are we authorizing those other dollars to come out of the general fund if we don't get the grant? And I heard you to say, yes, we are. And I'm not sure that's the case.
So Mayor and Council, no. I mean, what I was saying was, so in this, you adopted a CIP and approved the match funds out of the general fund. That was already done. That's separate than tonight. Tonight is to apply for these grants and the $100,000 stewardship, Trail stewardship grant that would then go toward that match and reduce the amount that would come from the general fund, which is now identified in the CIP. So already, one's already been approved in the CIP. This is a grant to try to reduce that further. And, yeah.
And we have some other people. Councilmember Aspman-Leader, would it be okay if we hear from some of the other, Chris wanted to comment on this.
Sure, if somebody can answer that question.
So Mayor and Council, what I would add is capital improvement plan, very critical planning document adopted by the council, but does not appropriate funds. So it's a plan. So it says, when we get to the budget, and particularly year one, this is what our intention is of how to fund it. If something happens different than that plan, this body will have to wrestle through. Does it want to add, in this case, the other 100,000, or does it want to change the project or not fund it? Nothing in the CIP or the adoption tonight locks you in to what you have to do with the next adopted budget that you'll be looking at in 2024.
Okay, thank you very much. Just clarifying that all we're doing is approving the application for the grant tonight. Okay, thank you very much. Is there a motion or other discussion on this item? Councilmember Joey?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I move we approve Montana Fish Wildlife and Parks Recreation Trails and Trail Stewardship Grant Applications for Rose Park Trail, Phase Two, and Stagecoach Trail.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Tidswell? Any further discussion? Okay, the motion is for approval of item one F. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, assuming councilmember Shaw voted in favor. And I saw her thumb up. So yes, she did. The next item up are bills for the week, item one J. Councilmember Boyet?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve consent agenda, item one J.
Is there a second? Councilmember Gillick. And councilmember Aspman-Leader, our rules do require in the case of a abstention that the reason for that be stated. So I'm just going to ask you to clarify your refusal on item one J.
So we, my company has payments for work done for the city of billings in one J two and one J three. We also are supervising construction of a project that is getting paid out to a contractor in one J one. So I'll recuse myself from all three.
Very good. Thank you for that clarification. Any further discussion? Have a motion for approval, item one J and the three subparts. If in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Shaw also voting in the affirmative. Brings us then to our regular agenda. Item number two, Tony, would you please read item number two?
Item number two, public hearing and first reading ordinance amending Billings, Montana City Code, Article eight dash 300 Cemetery Rules and Regulations, and repealing ordinance zero three dash five two four zero as recommended by staff.
Thank you very much. Kevin is bringing up the PowerPoint, and our cemetery supervisor, Brandon Schmidt, will be our presenter.
I did not know before tonight that there was a presentation folder that these presentations went into. So, pointed out the PDF and, okay. So, thank you, Mayor, Council. As stated, we're here to talk about City Code, code revision. Next. So City Code, eight tech 300 pertaining to the Mountain View and last updated in '03. So it's been 20 years now. So the first one, that requires the mayor, as it reads now, the mayor is required to receive applications for and issue burial permits. And actually, our current processes don't, that's, we don't, I don't go to the mayor when I want to bury somebody. So I recommend adding or replacing the mayor and putting city administrator or his or her designee as authorized to receive applications for and issue burial permits. And then hopefully he designates down lower, but that's a different story. Advertisements, we already talked about this in a couple of my other presentations. But right now, the City Code does not permit for any advertising within the cemetery. I'd like to put a kiosk up in the office, some flyers from different monument companies or funeral homes, and I would charge for those items. So just another way to raise revenue or increase revenue for the cemetery. Multiple burials, back, back when the cemetery was first laid out, it was just, if you could fit a casket in there, they'd put a grave there. Since then, we now bury urns. We have a special cremation burial with very much smaller graves. So I've went through and I've found all these areas that have been ignored that are suitable for burying urns, and mark them as graves. Our current, one says, our current ordinance states that only one urn shall be buried in a cremation pot. Our cremation, cremation plots right now are two feet by four feet. So there's not much more room. There's no room, there's room for an urn and a headstone. These other areas that I've found, they're suitable for a headstone and two urns. So recommend changing that for the, within the cremation section, stays the same. But any cremation graves I've created outside of that would be for two cremains. Flower receptacles, currently it says we were going to sell flower receptacles at cost. Recommend removing the at-cost just so we could charge market value for the receptacles. And it currently does not specify where the flower containers will go on the grave. I'd like to add that they'll be at the head of the grave just for uniformity, efficiency in maintaining the cemetery. And if they're willy-nilly on the graves, then it's much harder and inefficient to maintain. Ground, this was just confusing. And I honestly, I read through it a bunch, and I'd never really understood what it was getting at. Could you just go to the next one there, Kevin? So current wording is confusing, doesn't actually accurately convey what we want to get done. So ground-level flower containers are only allowed in cemetery provided flower receptacles. If, if people could put flowers wherever, like that would decrease our efficiency. We wouldn't be able to efficiently maintain the cemetery. Use of ground-level flower containers are not allowed in winter months. You know, they're, they're going to get snow on them. They're, you're not going to be able to see them. People will trip over them. We're going to run into them with equipment when we're out clearing snow for funerals. So that's why we do not want to allow them to be used in the winter months. I wanted to clarify holiday. It was very vague in there, and I wanted to include birthdays, death days. The bulk of our decorations, other than Christmas and Memorial Day, come during, some sort of anniversary, birthday, death day, or anniversary, wedding anniversary. So I just wanted to add that and clarify that in there. Christmas decorations, just like when you decorate your house, they start popping up right after, the day after Thanksgiving. Same at the cemetery. And the current rules, current code says they can, they can't start till May 15. If I enforce that, I would be removing a large number of decorations. My staff would be spending a lot of time removing decorations because people just show up right after New Year's, they decorate the house, they come to the cemetery, decorate graves. So I recommend moving that date to day after Thanksgiving. And then Memorial Day is not addressed in the, in the current code. So I put that in there to allow for decorating. When we, we allow decorations and use flower containers, May 15. So that was my recommended start date. And then up to one week or the Monday following Memorial Day, and then the day after D-Day for veterans' decades. This is kind of what drove, drove, was the driving factor in bringing this to you today. So currently, the rules state that no metal plates or bronze plaques shall be attached to granite markers. I recommend we remove that and add CE up there where it specifies who and how they shall be attached. Just, you know, if it was just adhesive, that's not going to last very long, and it's, the weather will make it pop off. We put studs, it'll last longer with the goal of, you know, we don't want to, them to fall off and run over them, or things of that nature get lost. So we would like them to be mounted with studs by a monument company. And while the specific request is for VA markers, I can't, I can't good conscience come up here and recommend that we only allow VA markers. I think if we're going to allow bronze, bronze attachments to stones, we should just allow bronze attachments to stones. Okay, next. We also talked about this a couple of times. The current one reads, all caskets and other burial containers shall be in a vault. We talked about doing green burials. So I just wanted to make sure that that was called out, that if somebody did a vault, or ball-less or green burial, which the community came to me and asked to be able to do, which is, when we went through the fees and budget process, we talked about all that. But if it's, my recommendation is if it's wrapped in a shroud or placed in the cardboard or wicker casket, then it doesn't require a vault. And this would allow the community to do the green, green-ish burial. And the last one on here, so I recommend moving the cemetery hours for burials from nine to three. Right now, it certainly says nine to four. If somebody, if a family shows up at four to do a burial, they could be there from half hour, 45 minutes to an hour. A full-size, a casket burial, it's going to take, once they leave, staff still has at least an hour of work to do. And I need two people there to fill in a casket burial. So I'm going to, that'll add up to a bunch of overtime. So if I kick it back to three, there won't be no overtime for, in those instances, but it'll be less. So my recommendation is move the burials back to three. And if they do want them after three, we did approve then the fee, fee structure for an additional fee if they would, to cover that overtime if they'd like to, if they desire to do it after that. Okay, that was it?
Very good. Thank you, Brandon. Much appreciate, appreciate your efforts on this over quite a few months. Council, we'll kick it to you for questions. Council, we'll kick it to you for questions. This is a public hearing. So, after we get some questions out of the way, we'll open up for public hearing and then I'll come back to council to ask for motion. But questions at this point? Councilmember Bernice?
Thank you, Mayor. Brandon, thank you for taking the time to update the ordinance. We've got a lot that needs to be done that. So, I appreciate you doing that within your, under your purview. A couple, a few questions, a few errors I have because, again, I'm learning a lot about this. You're the expert in this, not me. So, when we're talking about the marketing, how big do you plan to get this marketing? Because we saw the transit department take over some marketing and stuff like that. I mean, I imagine your departments, you don't have a specialist in there in marketing and advertising. So, are you planning on hiring someone to kind of handle this advertising for you or look for people specializing in this? Or would you just contract with maybe? Because we now have the marketing department within the airport division, just utilize them to take care of this for you?
Yes, sir. So, I don't expect there to be... There's not a lot of people knocking on my door to advertise at the cemetery. I expect that the number of people that would want to do that is less than 10. The funeral homes maybe, and then a couple monument companies. I don't have my whole plan worked out. I still have, it's still an idea. I'm still working through it. This is the first step in that. Once this is approved, my plan is to approach... I know one monument company has already shown interest in advertising. I haven't figured out what the... I do need to do research and figure out what the dollar, like what, how to do all that. But I do not intend at this time to hire anybody. Plan to do it myself and going on, finding folks that would like to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. And a couple of other areas, I just had a quick question. I would encourage you, maybe talk to transit or airport division because they're doing that. Maybe they can help you answer some of those questions on that. But you mentioned about the flowers. And again, I don't understand fully about the... Maybe I'm misunderstanding what you're trying to accomplish here. But you want them, which it makes sense to be uniformed, to be at the head so your mowers can mow correctly. So, are we, are you experiencing some issues now where there are flower fixtures outside of that headstone? And I think if I read in the ordinance correctly, that those would be deemed inappropriate and you would remove them. So, then does that mean that that plot or that family now will not have a place to put flowers? Will the city move that to the headstone for them? How is that going to work with those who are outside the standard now?
Yes, sir. So, if approved, and there's not many, but I have previous to doing these recommendations. I had been approached a few times asking if they could put flower containers in footstones. And I had to tell them yes because, even though I didn't want to. But I had to tell them, yes, they could. There's very few... I can't think of any that are actually in footstones right now in concrete. There are some in the ground, very, very few in the ground at the feet. We would move those to the head.
Okay. So, the city will move them for the...
Yeah, we won't just...
They won't have, the current owners won't have to pay for that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And I think the last question I had on this was regarding green burials. That's a new topic for me. I think I heard about it a long time ago. I didn't look into it. But can you explain to me? Because I'm more concerned about the processes. People who are, I think, I think councilmember Boyet maybe know this more than I do. But during the burial process, is there any kind of chemicals that you use that if this green process, they're buried? Are you going to make sure there's no chemicals that are released into the soil of some sort that could harm the environment or leak into the water?
So, a green burial is... A normal burial is a body's embalmed.
Right.
For a green burial, there is no, it's just the body. There's no... So, as far as I know, and maybe you know a little more, but there, no, there is no chemicals.
Okay. So, when you accept a green burial, you'll have it certified that there's no chemicals in there and stuff like that. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Rowan?
Thank you, Mayor. Brandon, I just want to kind of take a minute and, I think, put these in context and then ask you to talk about it a little bit. I have been amazed at the diligence that you have put into stewarding this facility. I think proportionate to your budget, you have spent more time with the budget committee than any other staff member. And what I've observed in those conversations is you are very thoughtful. You are very respectful about what this place means to people. It's really hard. People have deeply held beliefs about cemeteries, what's appropriate, what's sacred, what's respectful, and what's the appropriateness of how the city works in a marketplace. You have an almost impossible job in terms of meeting everyone's expectations. And I have always found you to be incredibly diligent and thoughtful and caring. But what's really resonated with me and what I'd like you to talk about is that one of the reasons that people go to Mountain View is they count on it to exist in perpetuity and that a lot of private cemeteries struggle. And I think I've learned that from councilmember Boyet as well, that the private market is challenging and people come to Mountain View because they count on us as a city facility to protect their loved ones in perpetuity. And so, I think some of these are cleanups in the ordinance, but some of them really speak to that budgetary stewardship. And so, I was wondering if you just wanted to mention a couple of the places where you think this is helping us to stabilize the finances of this cemetery for the long term?
I guess that's a little, maybe a little deeper than I... Maybe it's just different words. But, you know, I drive my life crazy at home. I'm always looking at the checkbook. It's like, how much money we got? How much money is going out? And I don't know. It's just how ingrained in me, you know? I don't want to be in the negative. And I guess I'm just carrying that into my work here. I just, I... And there's a lot of things the city needs to spend money on other than this. So, you know, it's just my goal to get that, you know? If I could break even, that'd be awesome. But it's, I don't see that in the near future. But that doesn't mean I don't try. So, I don't know if that answers your...
The green burials, the advertisements, I mean, these are all things that help us improve our ability to steward this facility over the long term, right?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. You've just, you've brought so much creativity to this position and I really just wanted to commend you for it.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. And I try to, you know, I get people coming, and I don't, a lot of these, I don't come up with my own. It'll get, somebody comes in and asks for something and I'm like, I always try to get to yes on anything, as long as it's within the rules and, you know, possible. So, the green burials, I didn't really think that up. Somebody came to me and asked, hey, can we do this? So, I just tried to figure out how we could do it and how that would fit into our operation. So, I guess, yeah. I know, and we were talking about the spreading garden and all that in there. You know, cremations are huge and they're only getting bigger or bigger percentage of the pie. And we don't, you know, people look, just trying to supply the public with options, I guess, as many options as I can. Hopefully, well, this sounds kind of morbid, but hopefully get more customers, but...
Thank you for what you do.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions for Brandon before we go to a public hearing? And councilmember Shaw, if at any point, we don't see you, so feel free to speak up if you've got questions. Not hearing anything, though. Let's open for public comment. This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to be heard on item number two, these revisions to our cemetery rules and regulations, please come forward at this time. Is there anybody would like to comment on item number two?
So, Mayor, I do have Nathan Sockham who did...
Oh, okay.
...and then raised his hand. So, we'll try it again.
Okay. So, Nathan, if you are with us, go ahead. We just asked you, tell us again your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes, please, on item number two. Go ahead.
Nathan, you will have to unmute. Go ahead, Nathan. So, Mayor, Nathan is unmuted and I'm not seeing that he's... Audio is either not working or we can't hear him or he's not talking.
Same problem we had before.
He is connected this time.
It is connected. But, so Nathan, we are not hearing you. We'll just give you another five or 10 seconds if you have any way to solve that problem on your end. Again, if we don't hear from you, please feel free to send us an email at any time. Okay? No luck on that. Sorry about that. Technical difficulties, they say. So, anybody else online?
No.
Okay. Then we'll close our public hearing on item number two and come back to our council. Councilmember Rowan, councilmember Boyet?
Having conducted a public hearing, considered written and spoken testimony, I move to approve the first reading ordinance amending Billings, Montana City Code, Article 8-300, and repealing ordinance 03-5240 as recommended by staff.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Boyet will give you the second. Councilmember Rowan or Boyet, did you want to speak to your motion?
I said my piece, Mayor.
Okay. Very good. Councilmember Boyet?
I'm glad that he brought it in. 20 years is a long time not to change anything. And we know the world changes a lot. So, I'm real happy that we have someone that's conscientious and brings new things and changes to us on a timely matter.
Thank you very much. Any further comment on the motion? I would just double or echo that and encourage all of our departments who operate under our regulations as they do to kind of monitor those and have a big file where when you see something needs to be changed, make a little note. Don't come to us every week, but every year or two to keep those updated. And that way, we don't get behind by 20 years. So, Brandon, good job with you and your crowd. So, with that, we'll move on to vote. So, the motion is for approval of item two, consistent with the staff recommendations for those changes. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I think I heard councilmember Shaw in the affirmative. She indicates thumbs up on that. So, that concludes item number two. Tony, would you read item number three?
Item number three. Public hearing and first reading ordinance for zone change 1040 located at 1404 and 1406 Avenue B. Zoning commission recommends approval and adoption of the 10 criteria.
Zoning coordinator, Nicole Cromwell. Nicole?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This, these two applications, zone change 1040 and then the subsequent special review 998, involve the same pieces of property. The zone change applies to two parcels and the special review applies to just one of those two parcels. So, zone change 1040 is to change two parcels at the intersection of 14th Street West and Avenue B to the north of the Stockman Bank that has its large bank building on the corner there on the frontage of Grand Avenue. Several years ago, when that bank was being built, they bought the corner property at 14th Street West and Avenue B to put in additional parking, in particular for their employees to use, so that customer parking on the bank site would be more abundant. That zoning at the time was residential. Our code at the time allowed surface parking lots to be established by special review in residential zones. Our code was changed in 2021. And now, surface parking lots are allowed by special review in commercial zone districts such as neighborhood office or neighborhood mixed use as primary uses of land. So, the zone change is needed so that they kind of stay in conformance with zoning for special review uses on neighborhood office parcels. And we'll see if we can make this work. Not yet. There. So, neighborhood office is intended to allow professional offices, personal, business services, medical, dental uses, and certain uses by special review like surface parking. It also allows residential uses either as mixed with a commercial use or on its own, a one-to-four family structures are allowed. New developments in the neighborhood office district are required to conform to all zoning, building, and site development requirements. There we go. So, here is the two lots subject to the zone change. You can see that corridor mixed use, one zoning to the south across the alley. That's where the bank building is located. And then these two lots are zoned neighborhood two and two, as are the other parcels to the north and to the west along Avenue B. Across 14th Street West is corridor mixed use two, a more intense zone. And that's intended for larger parcels that are separated from residential zones by at least a street. So, that property has multiple users, including the Ace Hardware Store, the Dottie's Casino, the multi-tenant building, as Evergreen Plaza. So, that's a very large development just to the east. Here's an aerial view of the property. So, you can see that corner lot is already developed for surface parking. It does have access both from Avenue B and to the alley. The alley is fully developed and paved and drained. The additional parcel, 1406 Avenue B, was purchased by the bank recently. They had an option, right of first refusal that they entered into with that property owner. And so, they exercised that option and bought the parcel. And their intention is also to zone that parcel, neighborhood office. It would keep the existing dwelling that's on there conforming to zoning, but would allow them through the special review process to add a few more parking spaces behind that The zoning commission is recommending approval to you. They believe that it meets the growth policy and the 2011 infill policy. Neighborhood office is intended to be compatible with residential uses, particularly when they're located at the corner lots, at intersections where you're entering into a neighborhood. So, these provide services to the neighborhood, walkable spaces. In this case, it provides parking for a business that has very shallow depth on Grand Avenue. So, it would reduce the spillover on-street parking that exists right now on 14th Street Then I pressed too hard. Maybe I have to go back. So, this is 1406 Avenue B. So, that's the single-family dwelling on the front of the property. That is the existing parking lot. You're looking south from Avenue B through that parking lot to the bank property on Grand. Technology loves me. This is looking east to the intersection of 14th Street West and Avenue B. And then this is northeast. You can see the Evergreen Plaza in the background there. It's a stop-controlled intersection. So, Avenue B stops and waits for traffic on 14th Street West. This is looking west on Avenue B. Avenue B kind of terminates at the West Park Plaza where the Sears used to be. As you can see, it's a very nice neighborhood, lots of boulevards, street trees, well-maintained homes. These are the 10 review criteria for all zone changes. And the zoning commission found positive findings for each one of these. Again, here is the zoning map. Oops. Got to go back. So, that's the end of the zone change presentation and I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Yeah. Questions for Nicole? This is a public hearing. Before we go to a public hearing, though, are there any questions for Nicole? Councilmember Rowan?
Nicole, what's the pedestrian path here? Do they have to go up to the corner? How do they get across?
Across the alley? They just walk across the alley.
There's no worry about traffic incursion? They're not trying to cross 14th?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all. So, when they park on the existing lot, they just walk...
Across the alley.
...through the alley into the parking lot of the bank and then the entry is right there.
And so, no one from that across the 14th is sneaking into their lots?
No.
Okay.
I mean, the Stockman Bank has lots of security cameras and good outdoor lighting, both in the alley and around the building and in the existing parking lot. It has low-level pedestrian-style lighting so that it's very visible at night.
Okay. So, you don't have any foot traffic concerns?
No.
Okay.
Very good. Any other question? Councilmember Tizwell?
Nicole, is there a call for a separation between 1406 and 1410?
Nicole, is there a call for a separation between fourteen oh six and fourteen ten? At some point, I see there's a fence in the backyard of fourteen ten, but
Right.
Some sort of line between the two of those?
Right now, there is. There's the fence that separates fourteen oh four from fourteen oh six. As part of the special review, they're proposing to move that fence so that the new parking spaces won't be fenced off from the existing parking spaces, but the backyard will be reconfigured for the new parking.
There will be a separation there.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Don't see any, so we'll open up for a public hearing on item number three. If you'd like to comment on item number three, this is the zone change on both parcels from N two, neighborhood two, to NO, or neighborhood office. We'll get to the special review application in our next item, but if anybody would like to comment on item number three, the zone change on both of those, please come forward. Is there anybody who'd like to comment at the public hearing on item number three?
Mayor, we do have somebody online. Alexis Weaver.
Very good. Alexis, if you can hear me, we've got you. Go ahead. We just asked that she tell us your name and your address and keep your comments to three minutes on item number three, please. Go ahead.
Perfect. My name's Alexis Weaver. I live on, geez, I live on one forty-eight Commerce Boulevard, and I would just, I love this idea related to the subject property and related to the end of the presentation or at least the last slide there. I agree, we need a lot more public outdoor lighting, especially for the evening, because it's the best way to create.
Go ahead, and she's got it. All right, well, thank you. No, thanks. Comments like that are not welcome in billings. All right, very good. Any other public comment on item number three?
So Mayor, we've got three people that I believe maybe have the same intent here. I would suggest maybe you could tell them to email their comments in. Their hands went up at the exact same time that this other commenter made. They all appeared on the screen at the same time, so I think this is another concerted effort to make comments like that.
Okay, and Kevin, I just want to confirm how you come to that conclusion. You saw them kind of come in together, and that is your conclusion. Counsel, I don't want to shut down public comment without reason, but I will do that unless the majority of the council wants to go ahead and take the risk. We've seen a pattern already tonight on several comments, so I do have a concern. Nobody wants to object to that? Okay, so commentators, please send us your name and address and your comments by email on this item. There's nobody else coming forward on this item here present with us, so we will close our public hearing on item number three and look to counsel. Councilmember Boyet?
Thank you, Mayor. Having conducted a public hearing, considered written and spoken testimony, I move to approve first reading ordinance of zone change one oh four oh and adopt the findings of the ten criteria as recommended by the zoning commission.
Very good. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Kennedy? Councilmember Boyet or Kennedy, would you like to speak to your motion or second? Councilmember Boyet?
Mayor, I went by there today. I spent about a half hour in the neighborhood. This is a nice area. It's clean, it's well-lit, there's plenty of space. You can see clearly what's going on if you're walking around there. I saw no foot traffic. Stockman Bank's been a good conservator of the area, and I think they'll comply with their wishes for lighting and cameras.
Very good. Thank you. Further discussion on the motion. Councilmember Joy, Councilmember Gillick?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll support the motion, but I do have some concerns. All along Grand Avenue, residential properties are bought up and turned into parking lots, and this is happening regularly. The City Brews along Grand Avenue, there was a City Brew. This is a trend that's continued, and I support the motion, but I have concerns that we don't just continue to take away housing that's still affordable. Midtown in Ward Three has a lot of affordable housing. These homes are older, but it doesn't necessarily mean they're no longer inhabitable. It's very, if there are two people bidding for a house, a business and an individual, the business is going to have the advantage of being able to outbid and buy housing. So I do have my concerns that we don't end up with just a checkerboard of parking lots all along Avenue B where businesses have bought up housing and put it in parking lots instead. So that is my concern, but I'll support the motion. I think it's just something that we should be aware of, because housing isn't easy to replace. The house that is taken down to make a parking lot isn't going to be replaced by a home that is as affordable as the house taken down. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Gillick?
I will similarly vote to approve, in part because we're not demolishing the existing housing there. You know, I don't approve additional surface parking lots, which I think are pretty unproductive use of land with great enthusiasm, but, and I know that the owners' agents are here, so I just communicate to them, I'd really encourage them, the bank, to look into staff incentives that for getting to the work, maybe it's an allowance. Either it's, you know, we can give you, provide parking, or you get a stipend for bus, or you get to pocket money if you walk or bike. I think that can be something that can reduce the amount of parking that's required around our city, and that has a lot of other benefits, and so that's what I would encourage. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Further discussion on the motion? The other thing I'll comment on that goes partly to why we cut off a public comment online is this has been a very non-controversial change for anybody who might be interested. At the, the planning department only received one visit by a neighborhood, a neighbor, and no comment by anybody in person or by U.S. Mail. So that matters a lot in this case, and it's also an indicator why those telephone commentators probably were not neighbors with a legitimate interest in this particular project. I just want to put that on the record. But otherwise, I support this as well. Any other comments before we proceed to a vote on item number three? Okay, so the motion is for approval, item number three, consistent with the staff recommendation. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously, including Councilmember Shaw online. That brings us to item number four. Tony, would you read item number four?
Item four, public hearing and special review nine nine eight. A special review to allow parking lot spaces on the south and east sides of the property at fourteen oh six Avenue B. Zoning Commission recommends conditional approval and adoption of the findings of the nine review criteria.
Okay.
Nicole?
So now that you've passed the zoning and first reading, we can consider the special review under the NO zoning. So this special review will only apply to this lot. The lot adjacent, fourteen oh four, already has a special review of record, so all those conditions stay in place. So special review uses are special exceptions, not allowed uses. So the proof of the compatibility of the special review use rests with the applicant, and there are nine review criteria that we look at and the zoning commission considers. The zoning commission did consider those criteria and is recommending conditional approval to you. Those nine standards of review are on the screen here, kind of simplified, but we'll go through them one by one. First here is the site plan that was submitted and is recommended for approval. It shows where that adjacent parking lot is and where the nine spaces, the new spaces, will be installed and striped. So there will be continued pedestrian access from the backyard of the home. The home will stay in place. They don't intend to tear it down. They have the idea that they would like to divide this property and sell that home and parcel to a new owner, so they would have the assets from that sale. So it shows there's two trees that they intend to save in the backyard that are substantial trees, and then do some additional buffering, and then moving the fence that's there right now over so that those new parking spaces are also buffered from the residence. And this, this scheme might give you a better idea. So there's the house, there's the garage. The dash line kind of shows where that existing home will stay and exist in the lot around it, and then the new spaces to the south and to the east. So here's the existing parking lot from the alley view looking north and west. So you can see that existing fence that surrounds fourteen oh six Avenue B. Part of that will be moved along with the southernmost light post to accommodate those additional parking spaces. So you can see at least one of the substantial trees in the backyard of the home will be saved, as well as another tree that's closer to the west property line. So this is looking south again, from Avenue B along the side of fourteen oh six, the house will remain. And then that basically, behind the house is where those new parking spaces would come in, and you'd have parallel parking, head-in parking to that part of the backyard. So the zoning commission found that it meets and is consistent with the growth policy guidelines for infill development. It does maintain the conformance of that existing home. They intend to retain that home and possibly sell it to a new owner in the future. It does support a safe and attractive neighborhood, so they're going to continue that residential continuity of Avenue B. So they're asking for the least amount of special review that they think they need for now and in the future, that it will not endanger public health, safety, or general welfare. We, the zoning commission, found that site improvements will not endanger the public health or safety. The retention of the existing residents will provide Avenue B with that continuity and improve safety, and conditions are recommended. The site is adequate in topography and size for the proposed off-street parking spaces and for retention of the single-family residents. We don't believe that the development of a property would decrease property values. Generally, new development increases property values because there's investment. All surrounding properties are fully developed. In fact, under the new zoning, many of these properties could add a second dwelling unit to their yards, either or to the homes themselves. The new parking spaces will be accessed from the alley, but there also will maintain that access from Avenue B. There won't be a new drive approach off of Avenue B, it will use the existing one. Let's see. Any expansion of those proposed new parking spaces would require additional special review. So there are nine conditions recommended to you, that the approval is for these nine parking spaces as shown on the site plan dated November thirtieth, 2023, that they substantially conform with that site plan when they bring in their development permit, that two new street trees will be placed in front of Avenue, the fourteen oh six Avenue B, one replacement tree on fourteen oh four Avenue B on the Fourteenth Street West side, and they will choose those trees from the recommended boulevard street tree list. The two new street trees in front of fourteen oh six Avenue B will make that property in conformance with the street frontage landscaping. They can place those either in the boulevard or right behind the sidewalk to meet those guidelines for street frontage landscaping, that they have similar light standards for this new parking area as they have now. They seem to be very good, providing enough light without glare and being lower than street lighting where you're trying to guide traffic. And they're not guiding traffic, they're trying to keep people safe while they're walking to and from the parking area. That they apply no work before seven or after eight P.M., that they apply within one year of approval and complete the project within two years. Failure to begin or complete would void this approval. Conditions run with the land and are binding on current and future owners, and the right of building and occupancy permits are contingent on fulfillment of the conditions of approval. There are no site-specific conditions that would preclude provision of adequate utilities to this property, drainage or access. There was a note that I passed along from City Utilities about the sewer line that services the home, and so they kind of moved some things around on the site plan to accommodate not building over the top of that so that it can be maintained. There is safe access, and it will minimize congestion on Avenue B and Fourteenth Street West to pull some of that on-street parking back onto the bank's property. No variance or modifications of any development requirements are needed or requested. Again, here is the subject property and the site plan that was submitted and is recommended to be approved, and I'd be happy to take any of your questions.
Thank you very much, Nicole. Questions? Councilmember Rupes?
Thank you, Mayor. Nicole, just a general kind of question. When we do zoning changes, there are ten criteria that we have to judge everything by, and those are laid out in state law. These nine criteria for special reviews, are they also in state law or are those things that we came up with ourselves?
Well, the special review is kind of an interesting application that we've created in billings, a long time ago. And it's based on the provision for variances and special exceptions under state law. So the state law says that the city council can reserve to itself any part of that allowance for variance or special exception to itself. So we created the special review to be the special exception to the rule for zoning districts. And so those criteria are very similar to the criteria for granting variances, although we don't require hardship, proving a hardship to grant a variance. We do follow the same sort of criteria that the Board of Adjustment looks at for variances. Is it conforming to the growth policy? Is it in harmony with the zoning? Is it compatible with the adjacent uses? If it's not, how can we mitigate that? And it's no longer an allowed use. In other words, the applicant has to prove what they're requesting is compatible, is appropriate for that area.
Thank you. Councilmember Deans?
Thank you, Mayor. Nicole, you mentioned the applicant may someday parcel off the house and sell it, so that still is going to be allowable use in the NO zone, or it could be converted to some kind of business office down the road.
It could, yeah.
Okay. And then they mentioned the garage is, I guess, is being parceled off there as part of that. Is there will be access to the garage from the rear still or the front? How, is that going to change at all, or is that just going to be an outbuilding that is storage?
It's access from the front right now.
It is, okay.
It has a little single-lane driveway that comes from the front and goes all the way to the back at the garage. So that'll stay exactly as it is. They don't need access to the alley from garage. It all comes from the front.
Okay, and there's no offset or sideline boundary issues with the garage being on the border like that or anything?
There might be, but that would be a rebuild question.
Okay, so don't have to worry about that for now?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Nicole? Okay, well, this is a public hearing. Would anybody like to comment on item number four? Anybody present who would like to comment on item number four? No one is coming forward. Do we have anybody online?
Nobody's got their hand raised, Mayor.
I'm sorry, Kevin?
Nobody has their hand raised.
No one, okay. Then we will close the public hearing on item number four. Come back to council. Council, how would you like to proceed? Councilmember Kennedy?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve of the request and adopt the findings, the nine findings of the review criteria.
Okay, so the motion is approval consistent with the staff recommendation, the nine criteria and the recommended conditions. Is there a second? Councilmember Joy? Very good. Discussion on the motion. Councilmember Joy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I do appreciate that a person coming forward suggested the saving of the trees, and that's a very good gesture. There's, as we are looking forward to creating an urban forestry department, that is very important, so appreciated that those trees do stay. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll proceed to a vote. The motion is for approval, item number four, consistent with the recommended motion and staff report. If in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Councilmember Shaw also voting in the affirmative. Then final item, item number five. Tony, would you read item number five?
Item five, nomination and election of deputy mayor pro tem. Staff recommends council nominate and elect a deputy mayor pro tem.
Thank you very much. Council, we've done the voting on these things a little bit different, and our section 2 hyphen 204 is not specific on the details of how these votes occur, except to say that they have to be by voice vote of the council. Gina recognized that, so sent me an email saying that what makes sense is that we would default to Robert's Rules of Order, which our ordinance provides. And so what Robert's Section 46 says for mechanisms is that we just get nominations from the floor and then have a vote, and if majority votes for a nominee, then that person has the well-paid job. So I will open it then for nominations on this item. Councilmember Rupes, Councilmember Nees?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to nominate Councilmember Shaw for the position of deputy mayor pro tem.
Okay, Councilmember Nees, you had a nomination?
I'd like to nominate Councilmember Jennifer Owen for deputy mayor pro tem.
Thank you. Other nominations? Okay, if there aren't any other nominations, I'm going to close nominations. So Councilmember Nees, you don't have another nomination, right? Okay, so, okay, we'll close the nominations. If you want to speak to your nomination, I guess, Councilmember Nees, do you want to comment?
I do, thank you, Mayor. As outgoing deputy mayor pro tem, I really appreciate the votes and the confidence in the council gave me to elect me at this position four years ago, actually twice now. And so I appreciate the mayor's willingness to allow me to serve him at times when he couldn't serve. I think one of the things I will give a little bit of unsolicited advice to the next deputy mayor pro tem is when you're out there, you often are talking, you know, not for yourself, but for the city, for the mayor. And so it's important that you take that under advisement, which your speaking engagements and things like that. So again, I always appreciated that when the mayor would call on me to fill in for those times. So thank you, Mayor, for that. You know, I nominated Jennifer Owen because at one point she was my competition, and I really got to know her then because she really understands and she knows her things about the city. She's been a great asset to the city. She also was the chair of the Heights Task Force for two years. She ran a very efficient, consistent, well-run meetings in the Heights Task Force. She did a lot of good work for the Heights, for the city, when she was there as the chair for two years. And so she's a great leader when it comes to that. I think when we look at now that when she got elected here on city council, one of the things I was really impressed with her was her ability to kind of jump in and start getting things moving. I think when we look at the things that she did, she brought to the city council the council committees. That's been a great asset to our council, to where we can hash things out in council committees, bring them to the council already kind of prehashed, and then we kind of finalize them, you know, here in the council. And so a lot of that work is done, is she's brought that, you know, to that. So it's great ideas that she's brought to there. When we look at here recently with our public safety, that's, you know, her background works in that arena. And so her asset there was great in bringing us some budget amendments to really get us a plan for those additional public safety dollars that we didn't have, you know, the family justice center, the temporary holding facility plan that is, that was put forward. There's the justice review, the entire process to where we, what we did with the police, now we moved it forward, and she brought that through to the justice review. Just the idea of, you know, how people get impacted, the whole prevention idea of, you know, we need to really look at this from a prevention standard, where she, I know she's assisted the city minister often with different reads and books, and myself as well, as far as the ACES scores and how that impacts kids early on and impacts our public safety. So I think she's done a great job of bringing different things to us, and she's demonstrated a ton of leadership within the city council. And so as the outgoing deputy mayor pro tem, I'm honored to nominate her as the deputy, being the deputy mayor pro tem, and I would ask for her support, my support to elect her to the next position for deputy mayor pro tem. She's done a great job, and I think she'll do a great job for the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Nees, and thank you for your service over these past years as well. Thank you for your comments. Any further comments? Okay, Councilmember Joy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I previously lost to Councilmember Nees in the previous, I think this is a very good opportunity for us to have two nominated women for pro tem. This is a very good opportunity, and I think, I would just like to say, I appreciate the abilities and the hard work that both of the nominees have brought to this. So thank you both very much.
Very good. Thank you. Any further comments before we proceed to a vote? So looking at this Robert's Rules of Order, it says when there's more than one nominee, vote in the order in which they were nominated, so we'll ask for just a voice vote for the first nomination, which was Councilmember Shaw. So if in favor of Councilmember Shaw, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. If opposed, say nay. I believe the ayes have that, so we have a new council or a new deputy mayor pro tem. Assuming you're going to come back someday, Councilmember Shaw. Okay, she gives her thumbs up.
Back very soon.
Okay, for the minutes, we probably need a recognition, or, so if you voted in favor, just so that we have that for the minutes, please raise your hand. And if you voted in opposition, so that was, okay, so if you voted in opposition, raise your hand. So Councilmembers Nees, Owen, Tidwell, and Aspen Leiter voted opposition. All other councilmembers voted in favor, so motion passes. Thank you very much for your future service, Councilmember Shaw, Councilmember Nees, thank you for yours, Councilmember Owen, thank you for your willingness and all of those things that were said and well taken. Thank you. Public comment on non-agenda items? Any public comment on something that's not on agenda, please come to our podium. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Tell us your name and address.
Catherine Card, 2815 Fourth Avenue South. Mayor and Council, I believe we're at a really critical point this week. We're heading into 20 below weather without chill factor for quite some time, and I think we will have true winter from now on. We have a lot of folks on the streets, literally. They have no place to go because there is no low-barrier shelter in this town currently. And although it's something that you, I think, think that you play a secondary role in, you're looking for somebody from the community to organize this, like happened last year, and the volunteer groups that sheltered folks in the years before, and nobody's stepping up. MRM requires that people become involved in their, in a program in order to stay beyond 14 days a year, and the programs that they require people to be, to join up on, get reimbursed by federal funds. Off-the-streets charges 80-some more dollars per person per night if somebody wants to support it and pay for the person to stay in a motel room with a couple other people. That's what we have. And I'm just asking you to step out in maybe your discomfort zone, to think of a way that we can shelter folks this winter. I will help in whatever way I can, and there are others that will as well. We have a whole community of volunteers. But you, my friends, are the people that can produce the will, can model the will in this community to shelter folks that have no other option, and people that are not able, not willing right now to become sober. And I, you know, grace is free in the Christian tradition, free grace, not earned. And we're called to provide free grace to people in hopes and in faith that people do change, given stable housing, warmth, food, and the basics. So I ask you, this is urgent, it's an urgent need. You're called to provide for every member of this community equally. I will help in whatever way I can. Thank you.
Thank you. There was another gentleman. Go ahead.
Hello, Cody LaFleur, 801 Lewis Avenue. Boy, am I happy I let you go first. My comment actually is going to be about homelessness and public safety, actually. The first thing I'd like to talk about is, Councilwoman Joy, I would encourage you to actually find out what is affordable housing in this city, because there's not a single location on Grand Avenue that has affordable housing. Unfortunately, my address on Lewis Avenue is my former address. I am a member of the homeless community. And as you can see, I work at Walmart. I don't look like what you would think of as someone who is homeless. I'm very disappointed that our police chief is not here because a majority of what I would like to say is actually directed at him. Mayor Cole, I don't know if you remember me, sir, but I used to deal with you at McCormick Cafe. I was the GM for McCormick's downtown, which is one of the crown jewels in our city. And I really dealt with a large percentage of our homeless population during my time there, and to find myself in that same position now, it's a stark reality from what I used to live. And my journey to that is because I was raped by a coworker, and my employer has not done what they should, but neither has this city. The city attorney is not pressing charges. Police treat me as if I have lied about being raped. In fact, I have been raped five times, sir, three of which actually classify me as trafficked individual across state lines. Those are not things that I really am proud of. I'm a survivor. That I'm proud of. And I'm a member of long-term recovery. So the belief that every homeless person is unemployable, the belief that every homeless person is a drug addict, I'm here to tell you, that is a complete falsehood. The best place that this city has at its use is the crisis center. That is a model that this city should expand. I have said on multiple occasions that the budget of the MRM and the budget of the CCC needs to be flipped. And I actually had an idea that I'm going to encourage every single council member to do, and I'm actually going to come back one month before your next elections and ask you individually, did you do this? Spend one night on the street, spend one night in MRM, and spend one night in CCC. Because I guarantee you, you're not going to have one single homeless person say, you can't have my bed. I have lost every single thing in my life. I am a father of a 15-year-old, so the 15-year-old that was killed in our city recently sits very, very close to me. I did not know the young man, but my heart breaks for his parents, and I hope this city will take a view on what is the real view of homelessness in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. We wish you the best. Other comments on items not on our agenda this evening? Any other comments on things not on our agenda? Kevin?
So Mayor, we do have a person raising their hand again. I believe that we could have the same occurrence happening here. What I would encourage them to do right now is they can mail, email council@billingsmt.gov with their comment, and by the time we adjourn, if they email that, we can read their public comment.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. And do you see a name associated with that person we can just make, so they understand?
France Holder.
What's the first name?
France, as in the country France. Holder.
Holden.
Holder, H-O-L-D-E-R.
Mr. Holden, given the experience we had earlier this evening, and because at this point, there's nothing on our agenda that your comments will impact, we're just going to ask you to make sure you send your comments to us by email, and you can send that at council@billingsmt.gov, right, Kevin?
Correct.
And all members of the council will get your comments. Please feel free to do that. With that, then, council, anything in the way of council initiatives this evening? We'll close our public comment on non-agenda items. Councilmember Rupes?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I've distributed to you an initiative, just giving you notice that I'll bring this initiative for our consideration two weeks from tonight. We'll get that on the agenda. It'll be properly noticed and all that kind of stuff, so we can discuss and consider this initiative in two weeks. As you'll see, and I'll email this out to you right after the meeting, all these items are related to different things that we've heard, some of us have talked about, we've heard from constituents, are related to how we build and develop our city, and some different topics all are kind of pertaining to that issue. So wanted to see if we could set up a work session where we can discuss some or any or none of these, if the initiative doesn't even go forward, and get some time scheduled on our agenda to discuss these and maybe give some staff some direction on, at that point, what we'd like to see through the rest of the year, or whatever that timing that might be. So just giving notice tonight, and we'll come back in two weeks and talk about it a little more. If you have any questions about any of the items, justification, anything like that, please let me know. Happy to answer any questions. And of course, we can talk about how we get through all these kind of things in two weeks. I'll work with that. I'll, I'll work with that, with the mayor on that so we can make this conversation as, as as efficient as possible on the 22nd. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Joy?
Just one quick question, Councilmember Rupes. What is a neighborhood pub as opposed to a neighborhood bar? Or, just a little clarification on that. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and certainly don't want to get into that tonight. We'll talk about that in two weeks. And then the, and, and and that's one of the things that remains to be defined, right? Should we even have that discussion, right? So I don't want to get into that tonight because if it hasn't been on the agenda and those types of things, talk about that in two weeks and, and do it then when it's been properly noticed.
Neighborhood pubs where only people admitted have an English accent, I believe, so. Okay, with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.